Good evening, everyone. Oh, good job. Thank you for that. I'd like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. And with that, could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Aye.
Councilmember Ford?
Here remotely and stating per AB 2449 that there's nobody over 18 in the room with me.
That was hard to hear. I think he's still muted.
No, I was unmuted. Can you hear me now? Okay, I was unmuted. Thanks. So here and stating for the record per AB 2449 that there's nobody in the room with me.
Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
And Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Thank you so much. So with that, I would like you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And we will move on to our next item, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. And are there any questions or changes by any of the council members? Not seeing any? Okay, then I will open this item up for public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment on the minutes for our August 22nd meeting? I'm not seeing anyone on the minutes? Okay, Ashley, I believe that you would like to speak at citizens business, I think. Got it. Okay. Anyone on the minutes going once, going twice? And I have no speaker cards for that. Can you check with our Zoom attendees for comments on the minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. I do have one hand up. You have the floor.
Hi, this is Lori Alderman. It's not actually on the minutes, but it's procedural. Is Ben Ford proper to be there under the Brown Act when he didn't, it's not on the agenda that he was remote? And the other thing is, the webcast is not working just soon. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. Any other? Not seeing any, Ashley?
That will end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bakker, could you please address that comment?
Yeah, Mr. Ford's participating virtually as a result of some changes in the Brown Act that allow, under certain circumstances, council members to participate remotely, so long as certain procedures are followed, and he has followed them.
Thank you for that. All right, then we will proceed, and I'd be looking for a motion on the minutes. Move to approve the minutes?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I please have a roll call? Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Aye.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey? Yes. So the minutes from August 22nd pass unanimously, and we will move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers in conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any of the statements the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.org. Last, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or info@kattatycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website, social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nextel, and Nextdoor. And with that, we will move on to our next item, which is proclamations. And the first proclamation that we have is proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming September 15th through October 15th at 2023 as Hispanic Heritage Month. And we'll be having Sylvia read that proclamation for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I wanted to also remind our guests that we have Van Duise from a local bakery, Don Luis, in the back, and coffee, and you're welcome to help yourself to that. Luis Enrique Tierra Blanca is from the Panaderia Don Luis, which is the bakery. And so we want to recognize him as well as Angelica Rivas from functional movement and performance. She was recently voted as best personal trainer in Sonoma County by Best by Press Democrat. So to receive the proclamation today, I do want to invite Linda Garcia. Linda Garcia, if you want to come up to the podium here? Thank you for being here, Linda. Linda is a 32-year resident of Kattati, and she and her husband raised two sons here. Ms. Garcia is an emerita of UC Davis and a former department head of the county of Sonoma, one of the first Latina department heads there. Her research has included the first hunger study west of the Mississippi. She also ran a federally-funded nutrition education program for food stamp recipients. Linda is a founding member of the Latino service providers and a member of Lo Cien. In her retirement and volunteer capacity, she was appointed by Supervisor David Rabbit to serve on the Sonoma County Library Commission for four years. Supervisor Linda Hopkins appointed her to the Sonoma County Community Development Commission, where she served for eight years. So I've personally known Linda for many years at the county, and I just want to thank you for her inspiration and dedication. And I have a proclamation that I want to read on behalf of community for, on behalf of the city for Latinx communities here in Kattati. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas each year, the federal, state, and many local governments observe Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th to October 15th by recognizing and celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas September 15th is significant, is significant as a starting date for Latino Heritage Month because it is the anniversary of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence on September 16th and September 18th, respectively. And Dia de la Raza, which is October 12th, falls within the 30-day period. Whereas the observation started in 1968 as Latino Heritage Week or Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period, starting on September 15th and ending on October 15th. Each successive president has called upon the people of our country to observe this month with appropriate respect, ceremonies, activities. And whereas Hispanics, Latinx, have made measurable contributions to our culture and economy, and have been integral to the prosperity and enrichment of Kattati, Sonoma County, and the United States. And whereas in the City of Kattati, Hispanic, Latinx, community members, business owners, residents, and students continue to foster the culture and tradition and tradition as a whole, while also advocating and ensuring a voice on behalf of the Hispanic/Latinx community, with recent focus on immigration, education, health, wellness, financial stability, economic and civic engagement, and social justice. And whereas Hispanics/Latinx continue to enrich our nation's character and contribute and contribute to our common future. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month allows, also allows us to honor and celebrate the key leadership roles and accomplishments of Hispanic/Latinx in our community and our shared values. Now therefore be proclaimed on September 12th, 2003, that the City Council of the City of Kattati does hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourages all citizens to recognize their significant and continuing contributions to our shared culture and continuing prosperity.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Mil gracias to the mayor and the council members. I have lived here for 32 years, and you're the best-looking council I have seen. Diversity in terms of diversity, and that means age, that means all kinds of differences that we did not recognize 32 years ago. I prefer the term Latinx because it is inclusive of many Latin American, Hispanic countries, as well as our lifestyle choices. I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Latinx population that contributes to the vibrancy of the City of Kattati. I encourage you all to look to join individually or as a city to Lo Cien because of their educational programs that are available to all of the community. And I am just one person. I forgot to mention that I sat on the selection committee for your chief. That, my sister-in-law was here, she is a retired vice president of Exchange Bank. You have many Latinx people who are contributors both economically and professionally. So I thank you for this honor, and I appreciate the direction that this council is going in, and the recognition of everybody who contributes to the vibrancy here, and the both economic and professional, and excuse my back. And so I would say to you again, gracias por todo, and I accept this on behalf of the entire community and people like Sylvia Lemus who step forward. So thank you very much.
Linda, would you like a picture? Would you like a picture?
Oh, yes, of course.
And you're very humble. You've done a lot for this community over the years because I've seen you many, many times here.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you doing?
Still holding? Okay, I'll stand in the middle and stand sideways. My next would give everybody. Thank you very much.
Okay, and now we have an additional proclamation. And do we have someone here to receive the next proclamation for Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week from the, yay, okay. Thank you. I will read to you. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati proclaiming the week of September 18th through 24th, 2023, as Pollution Prevention Week, and September 16th through the 23rd as Creek Week. God bless you, in the Russian River watershed. Whereas throughout the United States, the week starting on the third Monday of September is recognized as National Pollution Prevention Week. And whereas throughout much of California, including the Russian River watershed, cities, counties, and other stewardship organizations are recognizing the fourth week of September as Creek Week. And whereas our pollution prevention practices are intrinsically linked to the health of our watershedlands and waterways. And whereas the Russian River Watershed Association supports programs to reduce pollution, increase environmental quality of our watershed, and provide our communities with the knowledge to be effective stewards of the Russian River watershed lands and waterways. And whereas the nearly 1,500 square miles of land, 150 creeks, and approximately 360,000 residents of the Russian River watershed are connected and mutually support each other. And whereas the Russian River, along with its tributaries and associated features, are important resources to the people of Sonoma and Mendocino Counties. And whereas pollution in the form of trash and debris, chemicals from industry, and everyday living and sediment from construction, and many land uses and activities, all have the potential to degrade the quality of life and the quality of the resources within the Russian River watershed. And whereas the Russian River Watershed Association strives to protect our lands and waterways through ongoing pollution prevention outreach, which aims to raise awareness of the harmful effects of pollutants in our natural systems. And whereas during Pollution Prevention Week and Creek Week, creek, river, and ocean cleanup campaigns will take place throughout Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, including our local self-guided creek cleanup in the Laguna de Santa Rosa. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this 12th day of September 2023 by the City Council of the City of Kattati, that September 18th through 24th, 2023 is Pollution Prevention Week, and September 16th through the 23rd, 2023 is Creek Week in the Russian River watershed, and asks all members of our community to support efforts to protect and enrich our watershed health by participating in the many Pollution Prevention Week/Creek Week activities, and to take active steps to reduce pollution and care for our environment throughout this year. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Thank you. I'm honored to be here and accept this proclamation on behalf of Russian River Watershed Association. My name is Vanessa Apodaca. I'm the project manager for the program. And a special shout out and thank you to one of our directors, Councilmember Ford, and our alternate director there, Councilmember Sparks, and also Craig Scott, who is part of our technical working group with the association. And so, working closely with the city, I would like to encourage citizens to come out and participate. It is an unhosted event through the City of Kattati anytime during the week of September 16th through the 23rd along the Laguna de Santa Rosa Creek Trail in Kattati. Buckets and trash grabbers are available for loan through the Public Works Department if needed. After citizens complete cleanup events, if they could report back how many five-gallon buckets were collected, that would be great. We like to collect these metrics. Tons of garbage is collected annually out of the watershed and throughout the state of California, and it's really great to keep our watersheds litter-free all the time. But in particular, Creek Week is important because it's a chance for the public to come out and really do their part. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Ben, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, just that I think I'll say, I do encourage people to come out and do some creek cleanup work. It's surprising what you can find if you lift up the foliage and dig deep, and especially focus around bridges and storm drain outlets. You'll find a lot. Next year, we'll plan a bigger-scale hosted event.
Thank you for that. Laura, did you want to add anything?
Just had a question. Are folks to come pick up buckets at City Hall, or where should they go if they need to borrow a bucket and a grabber?
So we'd like to encourage folks to register on the website, and then let us know at that time if they need buckets. And so we'll be putting out Facebook outreach material for more instructions.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that. Vanessa, would you like a picture?
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Maybe you'll have to figure out how to Photoshop that in.
All right, so moving on, are there any changes to the agenda?
So Mayor, there is one small typo I just want to point out before you get to the consent calendar on item 9B. This is the award of the 2024 Street Improvement Project. In the staff report recommendation, it has the wrong contractor's name. Mrs. Delotti Brothers, the contractor, as you will see in the staff report in the resolution, is American Asphalt Repair and Resurfacing Company. And there's a copy of the updated staff report page on the dais, as well as in the back for the public.
Okay, thank you for that. Then, since this is an action item, I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the final agenda, raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone jump up. Would you like to check with our audience on Zoom?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. That will end public comment.
Thank you very much. Then we will be moving on to citizens business and public comment for the consent calendar. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 202101, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And so with that, I do have one comment card for citizens business. Ashley?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Hello, City Council, and hello everyone else. Very nice to see you and meet you. My name's Ashley Kimball, and I run North Bay Theatrics Incorporated. We're actually partners with you. We run our program out of the Mountain Room at the Ray Miller Community Center, right over there. And I'm just here to use this time to simply introduce myself. And we've had some new folks in the city councils in the last eight years since we've been here, so I just wanted to make that connection and thank you and let you know a little bit about how we've grown since being here. So one of the things is we started as just, I was a sole proprietor here, and my being able to grow here enabled us to now turn into a nonprofit organization that serves both Sonoma County and Marin County. I did some math, and when I first started here, we had 14 students. We now were able to directly serve over 800 students in the past year. That is direct contact, whether it be learning how to do a technical work backstage, acting, directing, mentorship, all sorts of things. And I, we couldn't calculate how many audience members we've been able to serve in the last year or so. But it really has been an amazing, amazing amount of growth, and it literally is thanks to our partnership here with the City of Kattati. Many theater organizations shut down during the pandemic. Lack of arts funding has been very real, particularly in the last few years. And it is because of our partnership with the Parks and Recreation Department that we've been able to grow and flourish. And so I just wanted to thank you all so much for continuing to have us as a part of your, as one of your partners. We've enjoyed helping co-host Kids Day and our Halloween, and what's the other one? And the Christmas tree lighting event for many years now. And let me see my other notes. We've been teaching kids ages three all the way up to, my oldest student now was 103. So we've really, we've really spanned. Everybody's welcome. And so, and so last but not least, I just want to say thank you because our program has grown from just having 14 actors to now we are serving basically anyone who walks in through our door and needs a space to be. There aren't many things in this world. In fact, I can't name one other thing that allows people of all backgrounds, ages, genders, abilities, interests to all come together and create something as one. I can't name a single other thing. And that's why the theater arts, I'm just so incredibly passionate about, and I'm grateful that you guys as a, as a community and as a council support that. And I want to thank you guys so much, and we hope you come see one of our shows. Thank you.
Ashley's a little humble here. I think I first met Ashley when she was, came to this meeting as Ms. Sonoma County, and she was a firecracker then, and it was so great when you got done with that, that you wanted to start this new business. And it's been wonderful that you've chosen to do that in Kattati. So I'm glad to see how it's grown. So.
You guys, you trapped me. I couldn't, I love this too much. It actually was 10 years ago that I was in the council chambers and was able to meet the council for the first time and interact with the City of Kattati at the Kids Day and at the Kids Day Parade. And it's crazy what 10 years can do. I love this community, and we look forward to continuing our projects with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. So citizens business and the consent calendar, anyone else wishing to speak on that? Most of the speaker cards I have are for other items, but I want to give anybody the opportunity that would also like citizens business. Not seeing any. Could we check on Zoom, please, Ashley?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. That will end public comment.
Thank you for that. Then I will bring it back to the council, and we have quite a few items on the consent calendar. Just for the public's benefit, I will read them. We have A, which is accept the dance studio repairs project improvements. B is the award of the 2024 Street Improvements Project. C is the 2023 City of Kattati Holiday Tree Lighting Event in La Plaza Park. D is General Engineering Services Agreement with Mo Engineering for providing general engineering support services. E is accept City Hall Window Replacement Project. F is award of the Landscape Maintenance Contract for Kattati Park, Demonstration Garden Park, Pocket Park, the Northern Gateway, and the Garden Gate Parks, Park Meadows, and Altman Acres Landscape and Lighting Assessment Districts. And last is accept the Kattati Park revitalization project improvements. So with that, I would be looking for a motion. And move to approve the consent calendar?
A second.
All right. And could we please get a roll call vote? Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey? Yes. So those items all pass unanimously, and we will be moving on to the next item, which is direction on future agenda items. Not seeing anybody jump on that. So we will move on to the next item, which is public hearings. And we do have one public hearing item, and it's an interim urgency ordinance prohibiting the conversion of senior mobile home parks. And could we please have a staff report on that item?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item before you tonight is a, as you said, an interim urgency ordinance. And it would impose a moratorium on any conversion or change of any mobile home park in the city from converting from a senior park into an all-age park. And I'll just point out upfront, because this is an urgency ordinance just through the statutory requirements for urgency ordinances, it's a four-fifth vote requirement in order to impose it, and it would go into effect immediately upon adoption if the council adopts it. So we currently have in the City of Kattati, three mobile home parks. Countryside Mobile Home Park up the street here on West Sierra is the only senior mobile home park. The others are all age. The city also has an ordinance that imposes rent control. So the mobile parks operate in a rent control scheme, which limits the annual inflation on, on non-leased mobile homes in those parks. On August 4th, the president of the Kattati, or the Countryside Mobile Home Park, reached out to the city, followed by several other concerned residents, and then followed by several other concerned residents. And then, as the council will recall, on August 8th, several of those residents came to our council meeting requesting help from the city based on what the mobile home park owner was proposing to do. So the mobile home park owner, in late July, sent out a notice of meeting regarding proposed amendment to the park rules and regulations, this is the end of July, to hold a meeting on August 10th, at which they, they read the proposed changes to the residents that, that chose to appear at that meeting. And this was apparently in the, in the effort to meet a statutory meet and consultation requirement prior to park rule changes, which is in the Civil Code. And among other changes, the one, the one that we're discussing tonight is the, is the change from the current park rules, which has, which limits it to 55 and older, to the proposed park rules, which would make it all age if that were to go into effect. By statute, that would go into effect six months after the meet and consultation, which I think, you know, we could reasonably assume could be August 10th as the start date for the six-month period. So, so that process is officially started. And like I said, there's a six-month window for that, which would put it into, if nothing were done, it would go into effect in early February of 2024. The city does have many policies to support preservation of lower-income and senior housing. And in particular, in the housing element, there's several different goals and policies that are cited in the staff report. I won't go through them verbatim, but they're in the staff report. And I found this actually kind of interesting, is that normally, there's no, there's no preferential housing allowed under federal law, but there was a carve-out of the Fair Housing Act in 1988, which specifically permitted exclusions from, from that law for senior housing. So it does allow, under federal law, allows senior housing as a, as a protected, or as a protected type of housing that can be created. And there's two different types. One is 55 or older. It's a 55 or older exemption, and there's also a 62-years-of-age or older. And the proposed urgency ordinance attached to the packet would preserve the existing, the intent of it is to preserve the existing rules that were in place prior to the proposed change. And the existing park rules for countryside were that, were that residents, each one of the units, and at least 80% of the units in the park. So that, that's the federal requirement. The park rule was 55 or older, at least one resident 55 or older in each of the units. So that, by adopting an urgency ordinance, that's all we would be doing tonight, is essentially trying to freeze things in place to give the city time to explore the options for a permanent solution that would hopefully address this issue. And lastly, I'll just point out, in the staff report, there's several other cities in the state that have, over the last, really seems like started about 10 years ago, or a little over 10 years ago, these sort of things started happening in the state. And so various cities, including the city of Yaku, Yakuupa, Yakuupa, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, Huntington Beach, San Juan Capistrano, and then more recently, we've been hearing about similar things happening in Santa Rosa and Petaluma. So there's, it's not, we're not unique in that sense. But the staff recommendation at this point is to move forward with the urgency ordinance, to just hold things in place while the city explores options to try to address this issue in the long term. If the council were to adopt the urgency ordinance tonight, it would be in place for, I believe it's 45 days initially, and then it would come back to the council for another. If, if the proposed permanent fix wasn't in place yet, then there would be a second hearing, and the council would see it again in 45 days or within 45 days to extend it. I believe it can be extended up to two years at that point. And lastly, I'll just point out that, to take this on, there is a brief discussion on some of the community development projects. And so I want to follow on discussion on that as well, because this is where this project will live if it gets assigned by the council. So we'll want a little guidance on, on the project priorities. And I think that's it in a nutshell, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if the council has any.
Questions? Yes, Laura?
Just a procedural question on the extensions. Can we extend it for up to two years one time when we, or do we have to keep coming back to it every 45 days?
So I believe it's just this one time.
You can extend it multiple times, but usually jurisdictions will choose to extend it for the full period.
And we would, just to clarify on that, we would, if we were to do that, we would do the full two years. And then if we do a permanent, some sort of permanent fix, it would just supersede that and make it go away, if it happens before two years, which I'm sure it would.
I just want to clarify one quick thing. Damian said we would extend it for two years. I think we would if the facts supported it, and that would be our recommendation at this point. But we're going to have to wait until we get to that point because of the way the urgency statutes were. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ben, did you have any questions? Ben? No? Okay. Then I will open up this public hearing on this item, and I do have some speaker cards. So I'll start with the top of my list here. Anastasia?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council people. I didn't expect to be the first one.
You just ended up on the top.
All righty. I have lived Countryside Mobile Home Park for 21 years. I love Kattati. I have been very happy living where I am. I want to also say that in 20 years, I've known my neighbors to be good people and to be helpful to each other. And in the 21 years I've been there, not once has there been a problem amongst anyone. I also want to say that I've aged since I've been there, and I have many health issues now I'm dealing with. Some of my neighbors are battling some serious stuff. And it's a huge concern to think about our safety, our homes are threatened by the conversion of senior park being a family park. Not to mention, I don't want to get off the subject, but the owners have sent us unmet instant approvals, 39 pages, double-sided. The whole issue here is they'd love to get rid of us and in place, take the park over and do what they want. I just hope that we continue to have your support. And for myself and my neighbors as well, I think we'd all like the state in our homes. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Anastasia, we all get older every day. It's not just you. Carrie? Carrie Steckler?
Again, thank you for letting us have our views be heard. I too live in the Mobile Home Park, have been there about 10 years. And like Anastasia said, it's a wonderful place to live. It's a nice community. But I was thinking from a different perspective, although I know there's a lot of people that want to comment tonight, so I'll keep it brief. But as an affordability issue, as far as, like you had mentioned, there was different mobile home parks in Kattati, but there's not a lot of senior living that is affordable in Sonoma, in the world, in the United States, actually. But as a butterfly effect, it keeps it, if it was to be able to stay as a senior living, it keeps it more, the numbers more affordable for people that are in the stage of their life where they're not necessarily thriving and building their careers. They have a certain amount that either they have, that they can invest, or that they are able to spend. So if, when the parks become all age, there's a lot of families that live together, which is absolutely great, but they're also, their buying power and their earning power changes a lot of numbers. So that it makes it so that when units that don't come up very often, like in our case, pretty much people stay because they're at a retirement and kind of a slowing down sector of their life and just want to kind of be, a lot of people, a lot of our places don't really come available unless it's in the case of somebody passing away or something along that line. And so because of those units being such a small amount, when families come in, they have a lot more buying power, and it drives those numbers up. And it doesn't help the people who are at a limited budget to be able to buy in and have a place to live. And I forgot what I was going to say. Sorry. Well, I guess that's it. I'm so sorry. I forgot my next train of thought. But just that it makes it so that they may be able to, because also seniors, a lot of them don't have a lot of other residents that they can live with, or relatives that they can live with, or places to go. So if they can't buy into a place, they end up not having any place to go. And that, not that it ultimately ends up being a homeless situation, but we've had a couple that did need to move out of the park and literally didn't have any place to be. So by keeping it a senior, we're just hoping that maybe it keeps the numbers a little bit lower. And we're not expecting anything to be for free by any means, but it also makes, it just.
30 seconds remaining.
Sorry. Okay, then I will just stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Don Reed?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm one of the new ones. My wife and I moved into Countryside about four years ago. I'm 68, born and raised here. I've never really known any other home than Sonoma, Marin County. About four years ago, in Countryside, we were, at that time, we were living down in Marin, where I originally grew up. And rent's down there about $2,700 for an inexpensive two-bedroom apartment. When we discovered Countryside almost four years ago, it was a godsend for us. For us, it's either Countryside and the community we have there, or we're headed out of state. I know we've been nice of seniors that were born and raised here can stay here. Lastly, Countryside, we've been there for about three and a half years. It's home. I'm one of the ones with serious health. I'm dealing with leukemia right now. My family is Countryside. My neighbors have stepped up and had my back. It would be a shame to lose something like that. It's a precious commodity here in Kattati, one that when homes come up for sale in our little complex there, they don't stay on the market very long, literally days. And oftentimes, there's bidding wars. So that right there tells you how precious that is to seniors. That's all I had. Didn't have any prepared comments. Thank you very much.
One moment, please. Do you want something? Yeah. Are you guys okay with that? Okay, we'll have to focus on that TV up there. Sorry, this one down here isn't working. Let's see. Mike Steckler?
I wanted to say thank you to all the staff and you guys for expediting this hearing, is what I'm thinking you are, and just taking it as serious as you are. I'm not going to say anything, because we got like 14,000 people here that are going to say things. And I've already said my piece. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for doing that.
Thank you for that. Brenda Woods?
Did I bring my cheat sheet with me?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm Brenda Woods. I live in Countryside Mobile Home Park. In 2002, I bought a brand-new home, and I had it set up in the park. And I plan to live out my golden years there. However, over the last 21 years, the park has been purchased by various ruthless owners, driven by the almighty dollar, with little regard for the residents of the park. We really don't have any amenities unless you want to call a laundry room and a toilet. I think that's the recreational opportunities they offer us. However, so we've been threatened with rent increases and recently unreasonable demands for bringing old homes up to their new standards, changes in the park status, et cetera. And we've watched our neighbors in Petaluma, a couple of parks down there, go through the things that we are in fear of right now. We live in fear of eviction or park closure. We're forced into costly arbitrations to defend our quality of life. And many of us don't have family to turn to. We don't have trust funds or, you know, pots of gold in our backyard to bail us out. So I'm here today to ask the council, do everything within its power to help us all stay in our senior mobile home park, remaining in our homes, without living in fear of the costly ongoing threats from park owners and management. Thank you.
Thank you. And Marie Randall?
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity. Let's see. Like mentioned earlier, the city of Kattati does have three mobile home parks, two are all-age, and only one is a senior park, and that is the Countryside Senior Mobile Home Park up the road. We are a small park, about 36 units. We don't have any amenities, no clubhouse, no pool. We only have six guest parking places, and most units only have one parking place. We don't have sidewalks on trash day, trash pickup. All cans have to go on the right-hand side of the road because the garbage man just goes that way. That does have a major effect on the parking and how many cars. When you have families, lots of times, you're going to have three cars, and there's, there's just nowhere to put them. The other thing is, I wanted to mention, my husband and I have lived in the park for 11 years. We raised our children in Kattati. We wanted to stay near them and our grandchildren. We specifically chose that senior park, not an all-age park. It was the most suitable and affordable, and that was a very big factor on where we were going to go. So this park is not suitable for children, and I don't think the owner cares. He is more concerned about getting more. He is more concerned about getting more rent from a family with two incomes than their children. And it was a senior park when he bought it. You know, I don't know what he was thinking. He knew exactly what he was going into. We need this ordinance to help us keep our homes and community here in Kattati. So I appreciate all the support that you can give us. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. So that is all the cards I have. Is anyone that did not fill out a card wanting to speak? You can raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. Is that a, nope. Okay. Then we will go to our Zoom attendees. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Nick Uvaldi, you have the floor.
Hi, you guys have me?
Yes.
Hi, council members. I represent Countryside Mobile Home Park. I wanted to come here to talk to you guys tonight to talk about some of the changes that have been made from a senior park to all ages. I am the representative. I am the managing member. And I wanted to speak to everybody and let everybody know that we have not had an opportunity to engage with the city council on any of these recent changes. It looks like the city council is kind of taking a playbook from the surrounding areas and trying to enact laws and trying to enact changes without speaking with park ownership and using them as a partner in what they're trying to do rather than a foe. So I want to let everybody know that we did convert to all ages a couple of months ago. And that is a bell that unfortunately cannot be unrung. That change will stay in place going forward. Again, we are happy to have discussions with the city about what that looks like long-term and discuss ways that if, if converting back to all ages is something that they would like to see done, that they give us a seat at the table and discuss options as a partnership rather than a combative relationship. That's not what we're looking for. So I want to invite all the city council members, anybody that's here tonight, to reach out to me directly. I'm happy to tour the community with you. I'm happy to show you some of the changes that we have coming down the line as well as some of the challenges that we face. As you know, affordable housing in the city is challenging for everybody, not just for seniors. It's just as challenging for young families. I know there's lots of seniors here who've said that they grew up here and affordability is a challenge for everyone. And that's for new people that are moving into the city that would like to grow up here as well. So again, I would like to open my doors to everybody up here on the council to discuss this further. I want you all to be aware of, obviously there's things that are going on in the surrounding cities in Petaluma and Santa Rosa that we are also involved with. I encourage you to look at Waterhouse v. American Canyon. The city there ineffectively tried to change the park back to seniors and ended up paying out about a half a million dollars in claims to the park owner. So I want to let you know that we are not interested at this moment in changing back to all ages. Again, that bell has been rung and if you guys would like to discuss it further, my door is open. I encourage you guys in the future to involve park owners in these conversations. I think it'll end up better for everybody involved if the park owners are involved rather than targeted. And that's kind of what we feel has been happening in the surrounding areas as well as here in Kattati. I don't believe anybody has reached out and tried to discuss anything with me. And I've been nothing but open with all other council members in surrounding areas. My door is always open. Please feel free to reach out and give me a call or again, request a tour and I'll take you through the park and let you know the reasons why we're making
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you.
Saulo Landano, you have the floor.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, council. My name is Saulo and I'm with WMA. We work with mobile home park owners and operators throughout the state. I'm here to urge you not to enact this emergency ordinance. Why would you discriminate and prohibit local housing providers from making their housing available to Kattati residents of all ages? Do working single mothers and their children not deserve access to affordable housing in the city of Kattati? Park owners and operators have no interest in evicting anybody. There is no one trying to remove senior residents from their homes. A transition to all ages does not remove any seniors from their homes. It simply allows spaces when they become open to be made available to Kattati residents of all ages. Seniors are not negatively impacted in any way by a transition to all ages. Again, I repeat, citizens are not negatively impacted in any way by the transition to all ages. Their housing is not in jeopardy and their rent will not go up as a result of younger families living near them. Now, I understand that some residents may not want younger families in their communities, but that is not something this council should legislate. Affordable housing in the city of Kattati should be available to residents of all ages. Further, I would advise that the precedence in the courts is to give park owners the ability to provide housing to residents of all ages. In fact, there is a federal regulation that prohibits housing providers from discriminating against applicants based on age. Now, as you've already heard, this park has already made the transition. By taking this vote, you'd only be discriminating against a young family trying to purchase their first home. You'd be discriminating against a working-class single mother trying to provide a roof over their heads. So I urge you not to move in this direction and to communicate with your local business owners instead. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That will end public comment. Okay, thank you. And going once, going twice. Anyone in the audience? Yes, you may come forward. Be helpful if you wouldn't mind stating your name.
My name's Wayne Randall.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to Nick's statements about how they treated us during this little reading of the rules. Hundred-degree heat. We're out there in the streets. We have to go get our own chairs. And I have communicated with Mr. Uvaldi about it, some damage to my property. I didn't get no response. So this is a kind of treatment that we get all the time. You know, you have to bug them to get lights fixed. You know, they've put no improvements into our properties whatsoever. We made it. We do. We put it out. We make our spots nice and clean and friendly. So you got to see who you're dealing with there, you know? That's all I have to say.
Thank you for that. I believe you've already spoken this evening. Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
I had that just played a coming up here, truthfully. I thought it was pretty much very well said already. But concerning this gentleman's comments that he make about the families coming up here, let's consider the fact that the, the conditions of the community are such that it might not even be helpful or safe for children to be out there. There are no playground amenities. There are cracked pavements. There are, we are living in very close proximity to one another. These are not the sort of homes that many families would want to have their children brought to. And I think that if you're just looking at the condition of what their argument is, I think the physical reality of that park is it's really unsuitable for children. So as a resident of 20-odd years and having been through this argument for various and sundry reasons with other park owners, I was appalled when I received this. I don't know if you have copies of it, where it just says, "It's going to be changed." It's, in fact, it's not going to be changed. It's changed. So we hadn't, there was no voice. There was no, let us work with you. Do you have any suggestions how we should move forward? None, none whatsoever. No negotiations, nothing. So that's why we have, well, we have more people here that quite honestly, age and infirmity doesn't even allow them to come here and be represented. And it's unfortunate. This is why it's really fundamentally wrong to have this rule changed in order to satisfy the money-making of this corporation. So we have issues of children not being in a very healthy area, no playground. We're right by an open street. There's no fencing. We have no security. I mean, this is a disaster waiting to happen. We have elderly people that by the grace of God are able to navigate their little spots. We take care of each other. There's a sense of community that I think is endemic to the fact that why are we fighting for our homes? If we could afford a better home, we'd be there. So I honestly think there should be a lot of consideration given to some of these factors. I know a lot of work has gone into making this happen and I hope that there is
Thirty seconds remaining.
I, I think I've said more than what I needed to say, but thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. All right, last chance. And then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. And yes, Laura?
Thank you. Before I start with comments, I just have a few questions and things that I'd like to find out if possible. First, I'm, I don't know if the staff knows this or if we could find out from one of the people who have come tonight, but when did the notice go out to the residents about this meeting on August 10th? There were some statements that, you know, there hadn't been a lot of engagement with the owner. And I'm kind of curious what the timeline was and how much, because we first heard about this on August 8th on the council meeting when residents showed up.
The, the notice that I saw, my recollection was it was dated July 26th. I don't know when it actually arrived at people's mailboxes.
We've kind of closed public comment at this point. Okay.
Are we allowed to request information from a?
Do you have the date?
I have, yeah, a little bit. It was, I received it. It was posted on July 28th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that was one, one thing I wanted to know. And then the other thing was there was a comment made that we needed to engage with our local business owners. And I'm just curious, is the, is the owner of the, the new, the owner of the park a Kattati resident or a Sonoma County resident? Do we know that? Are they local?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Just wondering, just the characterization is a look, is it a local business or a local, local business owner? I wasn't sure what they were trying to say. So, okay.
My understanding it's a corporation.
Okay, thank you. I'll hold my comments.
That's okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify the comment that, about the bell being unrung. That, can the, Mr. Baker, can you speak to that?
Sure. There are some provisions under the mobile home residency law. I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong. That pertain to rules and regulations. And that's why there was a process followed where the notice was sent out and they read the rules changes at the, at the park. The, the, the tenants in the park can accept those rules. But otherwise they don't go into effect for 60 days if the, if the tenants don't accept them. So there's this waiting period. So I guess what the, Mr. Nick was saying was that they're, while they can't be implemented for six months, because I don't think anybody in the park has accepted the, the changes to the rules, they don't have any intention of changing that. So after six months, they could be implemented. Potentially the city ordinance could be in effect by that, at that point, and then it would maintain the status quo. And the park would remain senior if the city ordinance was enforceable or were enforced.
So, so the owner was mistaken then? It's not a bell that cannot be unrung? It has not been rung yet?
I, I don't know that he was mistaken. He meant what he said. He doesn't intend to unring the bell. The city's ordinance is going to operate in a way that doesn't, that would prevent it from being implemented in the way they intend. So I would agree with you in that, in that regard. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask, I just want to confirm, this is the only senior age mobile home park? The other was a multi-age, right?
Damian, can you?
Just to confirm that?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And could you reconfirm the aspect of the carve-out? Because the speaker stated that, that we were discriminating by trying to make this a senior park.
Correct. So there is the Fair Housing Act prevents owners, anyone basically in the, in the real estate realm from discriminating on the basis of age. There is an exception though. There are three exceptions actually. For senior housing, there's a 55-plus rule that Damian outlined. There's also a 62. And there's another one, if you're, if you're senior programs that are pursuant to governmental policy. So I don't know what happened in American Canyon, but it was apparently, there was a lawsuit. I was trying to review some of the news articles. This was back in 2010, 2011. Maybe a similar situation. I'm not sure what exact, what action American Canyon took. Some other cities recently have taken actions similar to the one we're pursuing. At this point in time, what we are doing is proposing a moratorium that would maintain the status quo for a period of time so we can sort things out and figure out the best way to approach this problem. And Noah, Damian and I will be working hard to figure out the best policy decision. A final decision has not been made. It's every intention of ours not to be in the crosshairs of a Fair Housing Act lawsuit, and I don't believe we will be.
Thank you for that question. Any other questions? Okay, comments? Laura, did you say you had comments to make?
Yeah, I just had one comment. I wanted to, well, two comments. First, I just want to thank all of you for coming. And I really appreciate that it's difficult to make it here and thank you. I know it's a great effort. Thank you for coming. And thank you to those on Zoom for coming in as well. As far as the, I do feel it's important for us to, to hear from everybody. I think that the folks at this mobile home park only had 12 days notice that the nature of their park was being upended. If the, the notice went out on July 28th and then the reading happened on August 10th and the bell has been rung, that really didn't give a lot of time for them to organize themselves and come speak to us. And I think if there had been more notice prior to that reading, we would have had a chance to engage with the park owners before taking any action. But, but it happened so quickly, I, I just wanted to make that comment. It happened very quickly for the residents and so there wasn't a lot of time. And then I think that's all I wanted to say. So thank you for coming and, and it is so important for us to maintain affordable housing for our seniors. Thanks.
Okay, Ben, I see your hand is up and sorry, I didn't get you to see if you had any questions.
No, that's fine. I, I didn't. So I just wanted to say I'm, I'm fully in support of and believe it's very important for us as a city to preserve senior affordable housing. That is clearly a class of housing that we need to work very hard to produce and maintain. I'm not a big fan of out-of-tan land speculators coming in and threatening us with a lawsuit, which they pretty clearly did. So I'm reluctant to share more thoughts about response to that lawsuit in open session. We'll clearly have to have a lot more conversation about this topic. But in order to do that, we need to pass this urgency ordinance. I'm fully in support. Thanks.
Thank you, Ben. Sylvia, did you have comments? Okay. Kay, do you have comments?
Yeah, I mean, first I, I also want to thank you so much for coming. It's like such a thrill to walk in and see the room filled with people instead of like, it just, I mean, I adore my colleagues, but it's great to see you guys here. So thank you for coming. And I also want to reiterate the importance of affordable housing for seniors. I agree with the owners in that, yes, low-income families need support as well. But it turns out, it sounds like we have two mobile home parks that can home parks that can accommodate those families, and only one that can accommodate seniors. And so I also am very strongly in support of doing everything we can to protect that.
Go ahead, Sylvia.
Okay, so I just wanted to share also that it's true, and I think the city, the whole region is working on affordable affordability for housing, and senior housing is an important component of that. So thank you all of you for coming out last month that we were here, and again today. And I'm also in support of this ordinance as well. Thank you.
So as I've been talking to my colleagues over the last year or so, the one thing that I know about our community is when something important happens to someone, be it their housing, be it something in the community, the community rises and lets us know. And I've been trying to, to tell folks that because, as was pointed out, oftentimes there, there aren't people here. So it's really always important that we hear from folks when things are near and dear to their hearts and affect them. We make the best decisions that we can, but we can't get into everyone's minds. So having that information from people is always, always helpful to us. And I told you that people would come if, if they, if there was a subject that, that, that was near and dear to their heart, and this is, has been one. We witnessed that in August, and we're witnessing that again today. I guess from the park owners, I guess I would feel like it would have been nice to have had that conversation before these notices went out. And that street, if you will, works both ways. And if there was an open door and, and a wanting to do that before we take something that, you know, has been for decades and decades, been a senior park and, and wanting to just overnight change it, that that would have been a nice conversation for them to also come to City Hall and let folks know that that was opening. So that door goes both ways, and it doesn't seem like it was used that way. So that's a little unfortunate. I also believe, you know, that it's really important to have housing for our seniors. I've been on the council long enough and, and been out to that mobile home park and talked to many of you over the years. And I do know that it's a close, close-knit community, and you do take care of, of one another. And I, I think that that's important for folks, you know, as they age, to have community, because, as was pointed out by some of the speakers, not everyone has family in the area that they, they can reach out to. And, and you, as a community, have become that family for one another. So for me, it's important to do everything that we can do within our powers to see that right is done. I don't know what the solution will be, but I would like to see staff work on a solution and bring that back to us. And I will be supporting this urgency ordinance, because I think that it is what we can do until we can figure out something else to do. So that's kind of my two cents on the subject. And with that, if no one, Kay, did you?
Oh, no, I want to make a motion.
Okay. Laura, did you have a comment first?
Yes, I do. In agreement with everything that's been said. But do we need to have a little bit of a discussion about the community development work plan before we move off this item?
Would you like that done first?
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay, all right. So as you can see from council, from the staff report, we have some items that Community Development Department is working on, the BIC and PED Plan Update and Objective Design Guidelines for PLEX, and some other items, the Santero Way Specific Plan, Implement Housing Administration Program, Update Digital Permit Management Software, Monitor, Implement New State Housing Legislation, Post-COVID Economic Development, and General Plan Safety Element Update. So I believe that the direction, not direction, the recommendation from staff was to maybe move that general plan safety element. And are they equal? Or do we have to look at some of the other items?
Yeah, one of the, the challenges is the timing. So many of those that are on the list were anticipated to be picked up later in the year after some of the other things that we've already set in motion are accomplished. So what I'd like to do is take this time to work on our current kind of workload, because we also have a significant number of development projects in the pipeline, and there are timelines and mandates associated with processing those applications as well. Work with the city manager to come up with what I feel are top priorities according to state housing law, Project, you know, Permit Streamlining Act, and some of the priorities that we've heard from the city council, and be able to fit this into our current workload in a way that brings us back ahead of the six-month timeline, which really is about three months, given that any ordinance needs a hearing with the planning commission, two hearings with the city council, and goes into effect 30 days after that.
Yeah, I, I mean, it feels like this hasn't, an urgency, because there, there's a kind of a drop-dead date here, so it, it really needs to be addressed over some of these other things. I know we have statutory deadlines for some things, but some things where we have leeway, I certainly, I believe, and you can disagree with me, but I believe that this has a sense of urgency that makes it rise above some of these other things. So, yes, Laura?
Thank you. I, maybe this is Angela's question, but I, I know that we tend to budget for full staffing, and we don't always have full staffing, and sometimes we have a little bit of wiggle room in the budget. Is there a possibility that rather than putting off any of these other projects, we could allocate some funds for a consultant or somebody to help us with something on this list, so we don't have to push any of these down the road?
Yeah, I, I would, so I, I think the, the feedback, at least that I'm receiving, is that, is that we, because of the urgency of this particular item, that we, notwithstanding other statutory deadlines for development projects and things that have to go on certain dates, that we would fit this in as soon as possible. And we can certainly, as Noah was talking about, looking at the work plan, we can look at other options to see if there's other ways to expedite things or, you know, work with some staffing modifications. So, yeah, I just don't know what that is yet.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with my colleagues that this has top, top priority. I just, I don't want to see the bicycle and PED plan get pushed any longer, or, or some of these other things are so important, too. So it'd be my preference to do kind of a one-time staffing adjustment or, or allocation of funds to keep any of these from falling off, if that's possible.
So is that sufficient direction, or do you need more than that at this moment? Oh, Ben? Sorry, Ben, this TV keeps going on and off.
No, that's fine. I just raised it. I, I was just going to say before city manager replied that if, if the staff decides that the general plan safety element update, moving to next fiscal year would be the most prudent course. I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you for that. Anything else, Laura?
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that as well. I just wanted to get the option out there on the table, that if you think it would be better to get some extra staffing and get it done, then that would be good, too.
Good. I, I mean, I think that was just exactly the kind of feedback I was hoping to get, so that we can have further conversations internally on how to best shuffle things around.
So we, when I ask for a motion, you don't need anything? You have enough direction?
That was just verbal direction.
Okay, all right. So then, given that staff has direction for the other items, I would be looking for a motion.
I would like to offer one.
All right.
I move that we approve an uncodified interim urgency ordinance of the Council of the City of Cattati prohibiting the conversion of senior mobile home parks. Do I have to read the whole thing?
We just moved the staff recommendation.
Okay, I move to approve the staff recommendation.
All right.
I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Ashley, may I please have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
So that passes unanimously. With that, our next item is the city manager's report. Damian, I guess that's you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So Wednesday, September 20th at 4:00 PM, our police department will be holding a mock evacuation drill in coordination with Runham Park Department of Public Safety, as well as Sonoma State University, and this includes the use of our high-low sirens in our neighborhoods. So we're giving, we're getting word out on Nixol and social media, and we're also going to be putting word out on the emergency messaging platform that we're moving to, which is Civic Ready. And that's also been put out there to the community, that we're hoping to get people to switch over by October 1 to Civic Ready from Nixol. So we're going to be discontinuing Nixol in October, and we want to make sure that everyone gets our emergency alerts. So if anyone hasn't here done that, please switch over to Civic Ready. And that's on our, you can find it on our website, and we also put it out on social media, the links that you need to sign up for that. On, this is a little bit out, but on October 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, here at the, at the Ray Miller Community Room behind us, we're going to be having a drug takeback event. This is Saturday, October 28th. So we'll be talking more about that as we get closer. Just so the council knows, the, the park and ride replacement project that the council authorized is starting construction next week. The, there's a new crosswalk that's being installed on Valparaiso at Lund Hill. You may have seen it. It's been bagged. We're still waiting on a push button on the Lund Hill side, but once that's installed and operating, then it'll be open. So there'll be a crossing there, which is one of the crossings identified in our PED plans. As of tonight, the council did authorize us to award the project for the, for paving maintenance. This will be School Street, so paving the street here, as well as Gravenstein Way. This is a maintenance project as opposed to reconstruction, so this is just a crack seal, slurry seal, and digouts. And just a quick update on, on Potter Valley, Sonoma, Sonoma Water, Mendocino County Inland Water and Power Commission, and Round Valley Indian Tribe submitted a proposal to PG&E called the New Eel River, a New Eel Russian Facility. I think they need to work on their naming a bit, but anyway, that's what they're calling it so far, I guess. And this is to main the Eel River Diversions. The agency's requested the proposal be included in PG&E's surrender application, which is due by November 30th of this year. The proposal includes concept plans for the new diversion facility, and is to form, is proposed to form a GPA by the end of the year. And the city continues to follow this through attendance, through the monthly tack, water tack meetings, and listening into the Russian River Watershed Forum planning meetings. And those, those interested are encouraged to visit the Water Forum's website. Just, and then just a short update on some, on some recreation and other workshops coming up. So we had our first day of our new children's piano classes in the month of September. The class is free for families to attend and try it out, and they're currently full, but they'll be back in October for anyone who's interested in trying our new program. Next Friday night, September 22nd, we have our last free summer movie in the park, and we're showing Super Mario Brothers. This is in La Plaza Park, approximately 7:00 PM, or sundown is when the movie will start. And we encourage everyone to come and bring a picnic dinner, and there'll be lots, we'll bring layers, too, because the fog goes rolling at night, and it'll be a good family night for anyone that wants to come. And then this Saturday, September 16th, here in this room, we're holding our second community workshop for the Putnam Park and Civic Center parks. And we're reviewing two design proposals for each park and taking feedback to create a final design. And the workshop starts at 1:00 PM, and will also be available by Zoom if people would like to attend virtually. And the project pages and the updated design concepts are posted to the projects pages now, so you can see them. And this, there'll be a Survey Monkey going live here very shortly to also take a community poll on design options that people like or don't like. And a little PSA here, that we recently took over operations of Cattati Veterans, the Veterans Hall operating, so we're operating it, we don't own it, but we are operating it. And we're taking rental applications, so you can host your next event with us here at the Vets Building, or our smaller Cattati room here right behind City Hall, which is burst, literally bursting at the seams and always busy. So it's a, it's a good new venue, some different spaces for people that may want to rent them. And then lastly, just a reminder that Farmer's Market is still in La Plaza Park from Wednesday, every Wednesday, 4:30 to 7:30 through the end of September. So we encourage everyone to come down there and take advantage of it before it's gone at the end of September for the winter. And then we also are getting ready for our fall recreation classes, including new additions coming, coming your way, which include youth soccer, Falun Gong, free meditation classes, and Zumba Gold, Zumba Fitness, children's ballet, pre-ballet, youth theater, which you heard a little bit about tonight, children's gymnastics and Aikido. So there's a lot going on. And if any of that sounds interesting, we highly encourage people to sign up on the city website at the recreation page. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions. Thore, Arnie?
Damian, are, are we, have we considered doing information at the Farmer's Market for Civic Ready, so that we can, you know, catch people that are at the Farmer's Market? I don't know if we have any kind of handout that we could, you know?
We could probably produce something, that's a
It's just, you know, the more
We're also actively tabling down there for, for the tree program, as well as the Santero Way Plan. So it could be relatively straightforward to do.
Yeah, I know that the numbers are ticking up, but it's going to take a while for us to, to get there with that. So, questions? Yes. So for Civic Ready, I just glanced at the website, and they have 30 spoken languages and 66 written languages. When I signed up, I wasn't given an option. Is there going to be, which, which of those languages do we have access to?
You should have access to all of them. There should be a primary language that you request to receive communications in. So I'm not sure why, I'm not sure why you didn't see that, but it should be available.
Default, you had, it defaulted to English, so.
Okay, I may just not have noticed it. Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure they, I mean, that sounds like a lot to me, but I just want to make sure, you know, that at least the big ones are available. All right, thank you.
I'm wondering if maybe if we do end up tossing out flyers or something at the park, if, if, if there could be a Spanish language available with instructions on how to set your language to Spanish, since it seems like maybe it wasn't super intuitive how to do it.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, the directions were definitely in English, for sure. Thank you.
Ben, did you have any questions? No? Okay. Then we will then move on to city council member reports. Start this way. Kay, do you have anything? Okay. Sylvia?
Sure. Yes. Okay, so last Friday, I attended the Centers of Junior College, Polyomera Doyle Hall Student Housing Ribbon Cutting. Vice Mayor Sparks was there as well. It was a very nice event. They had some of the chancellors, community college chancellors were also available. And they gave Dr. Chong, you know, he was one of the initiators of the housing, so he was there as well. So it was a nice event. There's also, next Saturday, September 23rd, the Cattati Rana Park Unified School District and Mecha are holding their first community celebration at the high school from 3:00 to 7:00. It's the unveiling, the inauguration of the Native US mural, and they're going to have a lot of food and booths and music and a lot of events there next Saturday from 3:00 to 7:00. So go and support the students, that's going on. Also, the Cattati Chamber of Commerce is having a ribbon cutting this Saturday at the Windows Health Clinic at 12:30. Now here, they're going to have beer there. at the Windows Health Clinic at 12:30. And I hear they're gonna have beer there. I won't be here, but, but here, having beer. And they have a number of other ribbon cuttings coming up for prep kitchen, the knife shop, the new knife shop downtown, La Plaza Vet, and the Cattati Moves. So that's upcoming. That's what I have.
Great, thank you. Laura?
Yes, thank you. Well, it was a great ribbon cutting. It was very convenient for me, although I had to ditch early to go walk.
Did you cut class?
No, no, I walked 100 feet away from the ribbon cutting to get to my class and. Uh, but I attended the um, continuum, uh, homelessness continuum of care board meeting a few weeks ago. I'll just, it was a four hour meeting. I'll share some highlights very quickly. There have been some good changes to the intake system that's used when somebody um, comes into one of our provider, one of the providers in the county. Apparently, it had been the case that folks had to, anytime they switched to a new provider or entered a new service that they hadn't used before, they would have to answer all the same intake questions over again, which could be extremely extensive. And they might have to share traumatic information about their background over and over and over again, which was not a good situation. So there were some, a lot of resources that went into changing how that works behind the scenes, changing the software so that the information transfers over and folks don't have to answer those questions ever again after the first time, which was a really positive change that people have been asking for, for, for a while. Um, there was a MOU that was signed between the Continuum of Care and the county, or was drafted, I should say, back in October and November of last year. And this MOU stated that the cities would, at some point in the future, be um, contributing financially to the cost to run the Continuum of Care Board. And the idea within the letter was that within one year from the MOU being adopted, that would be worked out and, and the cities would start to contribute. There'd be kind of a one-year delay. And it, it has come to light that the county of Sonoma has never actually approved the MOU. So there was, so they just keep putting it off and it hasn't gotten onto their agenda. So there was a, a little bit of discussion about that and that, that the um, we need to move that forward. And um, so hopefully that'll, that'll happen and get approved. There was a lot of discussion at the meeting about funding of um, outreach within the county at a subregional level. There's not really a coordinated system that universally funds outreach everywhere throughout the county. There's sort of a piecemeal um, way of doing it where different organizations in different regions of the county do outreach, but there's sort of spotty coverage in some places. So there was um, the Continuum of Care directed the counties, the staff at the county to come up with a call. Provide funding for outreach comprehensively to all locations throughout the county. So they're going to be working on that. And then last but least, there was a really good discussion about what are the gaps in homeless services that people are seeing? Uh, we're sort of open-ended and people were able to bring up gaps that they knew about. One of the, I'll just tell you some of the things that people spoke about. Um, there's a major gap in not only senior housing, but housing for seniors who have serious health issues. Apparently, uh, the Palms in Permanent Supportive Housing Site has been taking in folks who are on hospice, and they're really not equipped to do that, but there's nowhere else for them to go. So folks have um, been dying at the Palms because they are people who are dying, and there's nowhere else for them to be. Um, so that was identified as a major gap for uh, skilled nursing and hospice care for, for homeless seniors. Uh, also um, facilities for folks struggling with drug addiction. RV parking for folks who really just need somewhere to park, and they're pretty self-sufficient, but there's just not quite enough RV parking for them. And um, so there's also um, a gap in senior um, senior housing because emergency-based vouchers have an age limit of 62. So folks who are over 62 don't qualify for those vouchers. So that's a major, uh, one major reason for that gap. So it was really good to get that all, all out on the table so that we can start to strategize on how to address those gaps.
All right.
There was a lot more, because it was four hours. I'll leave it there for now.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I have four quick things. Um, my family and I went to the uh, Petaluma Blacks for Community Development um, uh, picnic in uh, Petaluma, which was really cool. It had lots of um, organizations that I'm, um, several of them asked me to speak with you, Damian, about. So at our next meeting, I'll bring them up. And then on Labor Day, I went to uh, celebrate labor uh, with the North Bay Labor Council breakfast. And then just last weekend, I went to the um, Empower Solano uh, Small Business Boot Camp. I did confirm, and you didn't have to actually live in Solano County to be able to participate, but there was a lot of really great information that was super helpful um, for uh, other. Well, actually, I mean, I can apply it to this too, actually, because a lot of it was about um, economics and that type of thing. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to put in a little, um, we did have a Coffee with Kay since the last time. Um, and I just want to put a little plug in for it, for everyone who's still here. Um, because clearly you're dedicated to still be here. So um, Coffee with Kay is um, from 6:00 to 8:00 um, the last Wednesday of each month at uh, the Redwood Cafe, because I love their potato skins. And um, the next one is um, uh, September 27th. So please feel welcome to come. I'd love to hear from you. Thank you for that. Ben?
Yes, thanks. Um, August 24th was the meeting of the Russian River Watershed Association Board, uh, which I'm vice chair of. Um, and the association, we heard a little about them when we did the Creek Week and Pollution Prevention Week proclamation, but they uh, are engaged in a huge variety of activities on our behalf uh, all throughout the Russian River Watershed. I, I just want to highlight a few of the programs that the RRWA does every, every year. So, well, one, one big thing that's, that's kind of coming down the pike for our requirements with, for the watershed is some uh, trash capture. We need to, we need to start putting in place systems to prevent trash from getting from our sections of the Laguna, for instance, downstream. And that's a big task, and they're helping to research best practices for, for getting those systems in place. They, they organize the countywide creek cleanups, so they're all happening that, that week that we just uh, recognized with our proclamation. Uh, every year, the RRWA, cooperation with Sonoma Water sponsors a high school student video contest. This year's theme is Put a Lid on It, where lid stands for Low Impact Development. And uh, these, if you've never been to one of the video presentations, you should plan to come. They're held at this Sonoma Water um, center downtown. And it's just great to see the videos that these high school students can put together. And uh, and then they run on social media and various other forums during the year and helps to make a difference in, in our watershed. So those are a few. They run 30 or 40 different programs on our behalf. I think it's a great bargain for the city, uh, what we get from our participation in the, in the association. And uh, Sonoma Clean Power uh, didn't hold a September meeting, so nothing to report from that.
Thank you, Ben. So um, on 8/23, I went with a group of folks from the North Bay Division up to Sacramento um, to lobby some of our legislators. It was really very uh, a whirlwind. We were going from here, there, and everywhere, but it was really very fruitful. Um, they really want to hear from us. So it was really good to have those individual conversations. And I have to say that on a couple of the bills, we were um, able to change some minds. So that was, that was really uh, really good um, to do that. Because oftentimes, they get, you know, the information they get, but they don't necessarily hear from, you know, how it impacts our communities and some of the things they're doing up there, you know, what, what the uh, unintended consequences of some of those state bills are. So that was really very fruitful. I also attended the uh, LAFCO meeting. Um, it was um, a closed session, so I can't really talk about that, but um, needless to say, that was an interesting um, meeting. Um, I attended the Marin-Sonoma uh, mosquito vector um, control district meeting. Um, nothing really to report out um, on that, but I did see a notice from them today, I guess, that they um, they have found um, um, a mosquito with a West Nile vi- virus in the area. So um, that's a little, a little concerning, but it, you know, was at least that there was one. So anyways, they're kind of all over that, so that, that's good information. Um, I attended, actually, um, all day, I was at SCTA, our CPA, literally from 9:00 in the morning until 5:30 at night. We did interviews um, uh, for a new executive director. And we have selected someone. I, I don't know that it's public yet. Um, I do know who it is, but um, we had great candidates apply and, and it was um, a really, really good session. And then at the, then after that, we had the regular meeting. And the uh, important thing to highlight out of there is uh, SCTA will be submitting um, to MCT, uh, MTC, uh, some of the projects that um, are, are applicable. Um, they're really pushing um, to finish um, SMART. So there's some of the segments of that um, on there.
Would you please um, spell out what those acronyms are?
Sonoma, Marin, uh, what's the A? Sonoma, Marin?
Yeah, Area Rail Transit.
Area rap- rapid transit, sorry.
Sonoma County Transit Agency, Regional Climate Protection Agency, Metropolitan.
Transportation Commission. Yeah.
Thank you.
How's that? Alphabet soup. Um, and other than the SMART items, there's some US 101 um, Quarter Interchange Improvements that were moved forward. And local bus service uh, frequency boost, which was kind of interesting because the thing that's in there that um, kind of will be helpful, I think, to a lot of us is addressing that um, kind of uh, micro-transit. So it, it's been kind of successful, the little micro-bus that they've had between the SMART station and the airport. So I think they want to kind of be looking at that last mile um, stuff i- in other areas. So that would be, that would be good. So that was one of the big highlights out of there. And that is all I have tonight.
Mayor Harvey, can I, can I add one thing?
Oh, yes.
I, sorry.
Where is he?
I, I meant to mention in my report just to thank the staff for the revised uh, logo and banner behind the dais there, because I've been looking at it all night and appreciating.
Yeah, it was. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we just, just need the one on West Sierra now. That's the last one, maybe.
Okay, so um, then we will move on to the next item, which is public comment on non-action agenda items. Anyone here wishing to speak on any of the non-action agenda items? You can raise your hand or jump up or, nope, nobody wanted to do that. And could we check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. That will end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. And do we have any information that was received after the agenda was posted?
Just the correction to 9B. I didn't know 9B that was mentioned earlier.
Okay. All right. Then with that, let me see here. I will call this meeting adjourned. That's one, and thank you all for attending.